All right, half a day and good morning. This virtual public hearing conducted by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities and the Arts is called to order. It is 9:02 a.m. Notice of the hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets on May 12th of 2021 with the second notice provided on May 17th of 2021. Notice of the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website. This morning, the committee will hear testimony on Bill Number 135-36COR and Act to amend subsections 34102 and 34116, both of Article 1, Chapter 34, Title 10, Guam Code, annotated to amend section 121903C of Article 19, Chapter 12, Title 10, Guam Code annotated and to amend subsection 3106E and F, both of Article 1, Chapter 3, Title 9, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations Relative to Updating Fees, Impoundment, Spay, Neuter, Vet Requirements, Pet Licenseure Requirements and Mandating Microchips for Licensed Pets, all as part of a comprehensive stray pet control program introduced by myself, Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, Senators Joe Sin-Agustin, Peter Turlahy, Amanda Shelton, Tony Ada and Telo Titegui. Upon conclusion of discussing Bill 135, we will take a five-minute recess before we hear testimony on Bill 134-36COR, an Act to amend Section 60354 of Article 3, Chapter 60, Title 5, Guam Code annotated relative to removing the minimum acreage for protection of farmers introduced by myself, Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, Senators Sin-Agustin, Turlahy, Ada, Titegui and Moylan. After discussions on Bill 134 conclude, we will recess until 1 o'clock this afternoon to hear and accept testimonies on Bill Number 66-36COR and Act to amend subsection 58206 from Article 2 of Chapter 58, Title 12, Guam Code annotated relative to modifying the sunset provision of the Special Qualifying Certificate 1600 Hotel Rooms Development Program introduced by Senator Moylan and Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Before we proceed with hearing testimony, allow me to provide the panel participants with some general rules of conduct for this virtual public hearing. All participants must abide by rules of conduct and quality assurance standards, including: The chair will invite individuals who have signed up to testify. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and shall state their name, title and organization for recording purposes. Please ensure that you are unmuted and that you are speaking clearly into your microphone. For group settings or more than one individual is present, please state your name before providing comment. From among the panel of senators, each member will be allowed to pose one question to an individual testifying for one round and be provided another round if necessary. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violations of this rule of conduct will result in removal from the meeting room by the host. And I'd like to welcome my colleagues who have joined us this morning, my vice chair and vice speaker Tina Munya Barnes, Senator Chris Duennius, Senator Telo Titegui, Senator Joanne Brown and Senator Jim Moylan. Thank you for joining us this morning. We'll now proceed with discussions on Bill Number 135-36LS and I'll begin with my opening statements on the bill. Bill 135-35COR is the revised version of the bill introduced last term that addresses many of the concerns raised in the public hearing. Excuse me, that's 135-36COR. This bill seeks to assist the Department of Agriculture in its role in regulating the pet population and was worked on in partnership with the department to address several of their concerns with their limitations when enforcing the current pet licensure law. The bill discourages the import of non-sterilized pets by adding a fee to keep these animals intact. With less intact pets coming into Guam, we can prevent these pets from mating and increasing the stray pet population if they are lost or abandoned. It also mandates microchipping so that all pets can be found in a database by animal control officers using the return of any lost pet to its owner. And lastly, the bill amends Guam's current volunteer vet law in order to allow more volunteer spay-neuter vets to offer their services in Guam and allow the Department of Agriculture more discretion in the amount of spay-neuter projects to do in a year. By no means does this bill remove any of the Department of Agriculture's current authorities when it comes to stray pets. One example is the authority to humanely destroy or confine any animal determined to be vicious. The bill also maintains laws like the leash law and the law that all pets be impounded. This encourages pet owners to register and ensure their pets are not running at large. Getting all pets registered, licensed and microchipped will be the first step for ridding our island of the stray pet population. Department of Agriculture has already started their community pet spay-neuter program in partnership with the mayors and like to encourage all pet owners to make an effort to register their pets as soon as possible. The stray pet population has been a longstanding issue affecting the people of Guam. Some people aren't able to walk in their own neighborhoods because of some of these stray animals. Kids walking home from the school bus are in danger of being chased by these strays. The bill offers a multifaceted solution to ensure that everyone from the Department of Agriculture to pet owners are all part of the solution to reduce the stray animal population and keep our community safe. All right, well now, here are testimony from those who have joined us today. I'll go in order of as I see how people signed in on the sign-in sheet. And so first on the sign-in sheet is Department of Agriculture Director Chelsea Munya-Brett. Please be sure to unmute.
Half a day, senators, good morning. Sorry, I'm bringing it up. Thank you for having this public hearing today, Senator John, committee members and all of those who sponsored this bill. The Guam Department of Agriculture has been struggling for years, in a few decades, to enforce many of the laws, rules and regulations regarding federal strays and owned pets. Bill 135 will help our agency through this struggle without imposing too many hardships on the community, but serving as a reminder to all of us that we have responsibility as pet owners. First, we support the efforts of requiring microchipping as this will also provide and will ease some of the requirements of the department to provide dog tags, which also are difficult for our agency to provide at this time. But microchipping is something that allows us to identify pet owners easily and it cannot be lost when a pet escapes from owner's property. Additionally, requiring that veterinarians confirm registration of the pet and the microchip in a controlled database allows access to anyone who can scan the microchip to easily identify the pet and the pet owner. This is proof, being unable to identify pet owners has proved to be a challenge when we find strays running about that are obviously owned but not easily identified. And will help with also addressing the issue of pets being abandoned when families move off island. Additionally, the mandating of sterilization, or not mandating, but the imposing harsher or more challenging requirements for people who want to bring in intact pets will also assist in these efforts. And in some of the community members that we've talked with and the conversations that we've had, it's actually been suggested, and I leave this to conversation for us to discuss, that we increase the fee attached to this requirement so that if an owner wants to import an intact pet, then perhaps we should consider charging a higher fee. And this comes not just from random pet lovers in our community, but those that actually provide services that have been helping us to address our stray dog and feral dog population. So I want to put that out there for consideration. Lastly, increasing our ability to host visiting veterinarians will help substantially as we try to work with GAIN and other pet organizations to launch a more impactful sterilization program. So the Department of Agriculture is in full support of this legislation and we thank you for your consideration and support of our agency through these efforts.
Thank you, Chelsea, for your testimony. Next on the sign-in sheet, we have Allison Hadley, Executive Director of GAIN, but I don't see her online. So we'll go next to Cyrus Lur, President, Guam Animals in Need Board of Directors. Cyrus?
Thank you for having me.
Cyrus, before, I apologize. I felt to also recognize that we have in attendance today. I'm really sorry, Cyrus, for cutting off. I forgot to recognize, we also have Mayor Jesse Alig in attendance as well as Mayor Jesse Gogui. Thank you guys for joining us today. I apologize, Cyrus, please, please begin now.
Thank you. My name is Cyrus Lur. I'm the President of the Board of Directors of GAIN and I'm actually filling in for Allison Hadley, who is our Executive Director. GAIN strongly and fully supports Bill 135-36. We think that this is a very strong, comprehensive and coherent piece of legislation that accomplishes a number of different things that have been obstacles towards our efforts and the mayor's efforts and Department of Ags in trying to corral this growing stray animal problem on Guam. As I'm sure everybody already knows, Guam, we have a really significant stray dog problem. In 2014, GAIN, in collaboration with the Humane Society International, did an island-wide survey of the dog problem in Guam. At the time, we measured that there was 24,500 stray dogs in Guam, 61,000 owned dogs, oh, 61,000 dogs cumulatively, both owned and stray. And since that time, we've worked with a military veterinarian who has a background in population statistics and we believe, we are fairly confident that number is growing about 3% a year. And so that 25,000 in 2014 is easily over 30,000 and the problem continues to grow. This problem has been growing for a long time. We know that from, we know from Department of Defense surveys and studies during the rabies outbreak of 1967. We know the population of dogs at that time on Guam total was under 2,000, it was closer to 1,000 actually. And since that time, the number has grown to well over, at this point, 65, closing in on probably 70,000 dogs. And so the only way to control the stray animal population is through spaying and neutering. You cannot kill your way out of a stray animal problem because you actually create these vacuums and the vacuums get populated by puppies and then you actually, in a counterintuitive way, increase the population in specific areas if you do that. I should add a caveat that you could do a widespread culling using poison, which is what was done in 1967, but those types of poisons are highly, so actually the one used in 1967 in Guam is now illegal. And it's something that is just, you know, not really feasible for Guam, it is not safe and it's certainly not something that would be, it would probably run afoul of federal regulations. So we know that spaying and neutering is the solution and we're very excited that this legislation has specific language in it that focuses on authorizing trap-neuter and release programs. This is something that has been a gray area when we've explored the law in the past, but this would allow us to be able to take those community dogs, the animals that are in a neighborhood that people feed, people kind of feel ownership too. But if you were to try to hold somebody accountable and say, hey, is this your dog, will you get it licensed? They're gonna, you know, deny it. And so Guam has a lot of these community dogs. People do not want to see them, you know, rounded up and euthanized. But this, a trap-neuter-release program would be very effective to target these animals. And so we're thankful that this language is included and we're also very excited that the language fixing the eight-day limit on visiting veterinarians has been lifted. We understand the reason for the language when we've spoken with veterinarians when this legislation was originally adopted. It was a, you know, a smart language at the time because, you know, people were unsure what it would be like to have visiting veterinarians come to Guam. There's always the fear that somebody's gonna be coming to Guam and somehow find a way to sort of start practicing without a license. And so the eight-day limitation was put in place at the time. But in practice, we've seen that it really doesn't hamper, the veterinarians are not concerned at this point. They see this problem has been growing and it needs to be addressed. And so lifting the eight-day limit while maintaining the other protections, so a visiting veterinarian cannot get paid, you know, make a living off this. A visiting veterinarian cannot provide other services. It's specifically for sterilization and under the oversight and authorization of the Department of Agriculture, we think that this is a very effective way to get volunteer labor. We've, GAIN at the animal shelter, we have had many visiting veterinarians, probably about 12. 12 licensed veterinarians, another 15 veterinarian students over the last three years have visited Guam and provided free services. We want to expand this. There's a number of veterinarians, American veterinarians living in Japan that have visited Guam quite regularly to provide their services, but they have had to jump through really difficult hoops to get literally locally licensed, pay a thousand-dollar licensing fee. And if we could, you know, just to come here to volunteer. So if we can remove that obstacle, because they're not coming here to practice, they're coming here simply to provide sterilization services for free to the community, this would be a huge benefit to allowing that to happen and have them keep coming back instead of being limited to simply eight days. The legislation also includes a requirement for microchipping, which we think is a very smart approach. It is, it is something that has been tested and utilized for decades now. Microchipping is not very intrusive. It can be done by volunteers who are properly trained. It doesn't have to be inserted by a veterinarian and it can be done pretty cheaply. At GAIN, we provide it to the community for $10, which is simply the cost that we get it from the supplier. So, you know, $10 community microchips is something that we can do. We've spoken to the mayor's council about doing it in the villages, being able to, you know, once the pandemic risks have been reduced, being able to provide outreach and low costs or if it's subsidized by of Guam, free microchipping to the community, that is something that we would be very excited to do. And it's something that's really beneficial. I, many times, were able to reunite animals with their owners thanks to those, to those microchips. And I know the mayors would appreciate it as well because sometimes you get an aggressive dog that's roaming neighborhood and if a mayor has a microchip scanner, they'll be able to identify the owner as well. So it's a useful benefit to pet owners, to the community. It's a very useful thing to include in the law. That when we surveyed in 2014, we found that 47% of had experienced dog attacks or aggression. So we do know that the stray dog problem is an issue. We also, 47% of people who didn't get their animals licensed at the time said it was due to cost reasons. So the remaining 93% of people said it was due to, they didn't know it was a requirement or that it was inconvenient or is difficult for them to figure out the process for getting their animals licensed. So the raising of the fee is, in our experience in 2014, reaching out to community, the fee was not the problem. And so raising it in order to be able to subsidize the operations of animal control and Department of Ag, I think is a very smart idea and we would very strongly support that as well. In terms of legislation itself, there was just one, a couple of tiny edits that we might request. There was the $150 fee for incoming animals that are not spayed and neutered. This is on the bottom of page four. We would simply recommend maybe including some language that would exempt owners of therapy dogs or helper dogs. By and large, those animals are usually sterilized, but perhaps there's an edge case in which says, you know, a person has a, as a, an animal that is a, you know, seeing eye dog that is not sterilized. And in that case, you know, we wouldn't want to charge them $125 every time they come into the island. So that's a very small edge case that we would like to just point out that, you know, to adjust. And on page four, subsection F, there is the requirement to, for all adopted animals to be sterilized. And this is something that we had looked at to in the past. And if we're going to be editing this paragraph, we might want to recommend language that simply says, unless deemed harmful to the health of the animal by a licensed veterinarian under the authority of Department of Agriculture, or something along those lines, because there are some very, again, very few edge cases of an animal maybe being too old to be spayed or neutered. We see that rarely, but it does come up and maybe it just might be something to include here. But other than that, those very two minor edge cases, we think that this is a solid piece of legislation and we strongly support its passage.
Okay, thank you, Cyrus. Just, for accuracy's sake, the fee for pets entering Guam that are not sterilized would be $120. So just to clarify the statement there that you made so that it's on the record.
Thank you.
Other than that, thank you very much, Cyrus, for your testimony. All right, and next, on our sign-in sheet, we have Mayor Rudy Paco signed up, but I don't see him here. So I will go next to Mayor Jesse Alig, who is the President of the Mayor's Council of Guam. Mayor Alig, thank you for joining us this morning.
Happy day and good morning, senators. The mayors and vice-mayors of Guam support Bill 135-36COR to strengthen Guam's pet licensure and sterilization requirements. Each mayor's office feels concerns regarding stray, abandoned and dead dogs and cats on a daily basis year-round. Without any additional cash resources, the mayors, vice-mayors and our staff do everything within our means to address these residents' concerns that are expressly beyond our statutory responsibilities. In section three, subsection 34116, it states, "The dogs shall be apprehended, sterilized and released." It further mandates the confinement or euthanization of vicious or wild pets. It is important to note that oftentimes unfunded mandates are futile. We ask that the necessary funds be identified so the sterilization of dogs, as mentioned in this section, is realized. And if it should be necessary, vicious pets can be properly confined or euthanized. We are pleased that section four will allow greater flexibility to permit visiting practitioners an opportunity to assist in pet sterilization and other charitable animal services. There are differing opinions on the best solution to our stray animal problem. While the Mayor's Council of Guam continues its short-term resolution of rounding up stray animals, we appreciate the joint efforts of the legislature, the Department of Agriculture, GAIN and the governor to execute a multi-pronged approach for the best possible outcome. Sidus Masi, and we look forward to the passage of Bill 135-36COR.
Thank you, Mayor Alig, for your testimony this morning. Next, Mayor Jesse Gogui, Mayor of Chalampago.
Yes, good morning, senators. You know, given Mayor Alex's remarks, I'm just going to go ahead and finish up my testimony and submit it via a written testimony. And so I go ahead and defer.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Gogui.
Thank you.
All right, there's a few other people that I do see on the sign-in sheet, but I don't see them logged on. So I believe that's everyone who's logged on to testify today has already testified. So with that, I'll proceed now to my colleagues and allow them the opportunity to ask questions of the members of the panel, beginning with my vice-chair, Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes.
Sidus Masi, Mr. Chair and Manana Sidus, to all my colleagues and all those on the panel here this morning, to the President of MCOG and Mayor Gogui and Donklin Sidus Masi for being here to support the efforts and everyone else. I, literally, Mr. Chair, got, wanted to support this bill as this has been a very, very sensitive and critical issue to all the mayors and vice-mayors, even when I was the Oversight Chair of the mayors in the 27th Guam Legislature. And my efforts in this support was to share with the team also that as we include those who, countries and states who want to support Guam in the efforts, I'd like to share that just recently I had the opportunity to meet with Tekel Director General from Taiwan and they too, as the sister city support with Guam, want to be able to help assist in this program. And I think that Taiwan has mentioned they would like to work on a spay and neuter program and if afforded the opportunity, they could also bring a team. So if there's any part there based on what is already being worked on with all the other countries and the United States, please, let's also include Taiwan in the efforts as they just recently have brought that up to my attention. Also, I wanted to ask maybe the Director of Agriculture, the fiscal note states, talks about the two different funding sources as it relates to this program, which is the Stray Dog Revolving Fund and the Rabies Prevention Fund. And it says, "The bill further adds, section 34116H establishing the intact pet entry fee, not to exceed the $120 for all pets entering Guam that are not sterilized. This new section dictates that all funds collected from this fee be deposited into the Stray Dog Revolving Fund pursuant to the section 34123 of this chapter. However, 34307, which created the Rabies Prevention Fund, states that all money is collected under this provision of this chapter 34 shall be deposited into the Rabies Prevention Fund." So is there a clarification there that's needed based on the fiscal note? Director Munya Brett? You're muted.
Director Brett, please unmute.
I apologize. Yes, Vice Speaker, it would appear so. At this point, we don't utilize the Stray Dog Revolving Fund. Most of the fees that we collect, or all of the fees that we collect, are currently deposited into the Rabies Prevention Fund to be utilized by our Animal Control, Animal Health Section. Although, if I may, historically, as the agency has been typically underfunded each year, the fees in the Rabies Prevention Fund rarely even get utilized in support of the Animal Control Section, but rather to pay various utility expenses. And it is used to fund their gas, but the fee, the fund does not collect enough to adequately support their section. So it would, yes, I think it would help if we clarified this section with the Stray Dog Revolving Fund and the Rabies Prevention Fund. Sorry, that was a longer version answer.
But the recommendation is to, I mean, there's two different accounts to make sure which one is the most advantageous for the agency to work with. And that was one of the concerns with the fiscal note was to making sure that it went into the right fund. So I think, Mr. Chair, that's also very important to look at, as I noted. And when this bill was introduced in the 35th, I know that the new version takes out the provision of mandating vets to license stray animals, which was a consideration that was asked in the previous term. So, Mr. Chair, I do support the efforts of this bill. I think that it, based on the fiscal note, bill. I think that it, uh, based on the fiscal note, if there's any revision, uh, Director Munya Brett, uh, because they're the ones facilitating this with GAIN and every, all the other stakeholders, please, uh, let us get a clearer definition of, uh, of, uh, what needs to, what one needs to be utilized and, and also maybe working with, uh, other countries who want to help, who have close relationships to Guam, uh, and that have been here for more than six decades. So, uh, I'm hoping that, uh, based on Taiwan's commitment to bring teams here to support the efforts, because they have a lot of expertise, uh, that's a plus for us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Uh, yes, uh, as the Vice Speaker mentioned, um, uh, the similar version of this bill was introduced in the prior term. And one of the, uh, biggest, uh, issues of concern was the veterinarians did not want to be, uh, sort of liable or responsible for holding on to pets until they're registered. Um, they felt that that could scare people away from bringing pets in to get, uh, uh, fixed, pets who are sick or injured. And, uh, their primary concern is, uh, keeping animals healthy. Uh, so they didn't want to be sort of held liable for that sort of thing. So that's one of the things we took out of this version of the bill, since the veterinarians were not in support of that. All right. Um, okay. Now, uh, Senator Chris Duennas.
Thank you, Senator Rajal, Chairman. Um, I, I just wanted to, uh, kind of get, uh, more up to speed with what this bill is trying to do. So I'm just here to mostly listen, um, Senator, and also, uh, I just wanted to thank, uh, Mayor Jesse, uh, for his contribution and testimony, as well as, uh, Mayor Gogwi's, uh, written incoming. And then Cyrus, um, once again, thanks for all your efforts and everyone, uh, from GAIN. So I appreciate the testimony this morning and I continue to watch the bill going forward, uh, and work with you, um, Chairman, on, on the final version. So thank you for recognizing me.
Thank you, Senator Duennas. Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you know, many years ago, in my previous life in the legislature, we began the process of addressing this issue with regards to pet ownership. And, um, almost 32 years ago, I was actually involved with the agreement, uh, between the government of Guam and GAIN to actually take over the animal shelter. And back then, uh, again, very limited resources were dedicated to maintaining the animal shelter or supporting the workers that were there. I mean, I remember the old wooden tin structure that they stored the dog food in and it leaked. And we had, you know, dog food with mold on it. And that was a reality that was faced with a lot of our pets and animals that were taken up to the shelter to be euthanized. I've seen the truckloads of dogs and cats that had been laid in the back of a truck, uh, to be taken up to the OR dump at the time, to be disposed of. Uh, probably all of these animals, other than maybe, uh, you know, feel ailments here and there for being out on the streets, literally probably could have had a productive life. But unfortunately, because we didn't have anywhere to, to take them or have homes or, or what GAIN put in place as one of those, uh, animal organizations out there of having an adoption program. I mean, the fate of these animals, uh, you know, ultimately were to be put to sleep. And what a very tragic situation that we're dealing with. I like many people on Guam, I'm a pet owner, and, um, I can't imagine having a home without pets. I think many of our people in varying degrees, uh, you know, feel a sense of, of, uh, having a home with pets in it. What I'm a little concerned with the bill, and what concerns me primarily is what the cost is going to be because of the government's inability at this point to effectively implement the registration program. Um, most people, including myself, have not gone up to Department of Agriculture to get a pet license for my pet. Uh, probably something I'd have to do between eight to five, Monday to Friday. Uh, I think we need to look at a more effective way of how can we facilitate, uh, you know, to our, to our members of our community, making it more user friendly for them to be able to register their pet, because we do understand there is a stray dog population and, and the problems of, you know, these animals that are out there, sometimes in packs, that can be very threatening within the community. I'm sure our mayors are very familiar with that. But I think we need to look first at how can the government help facilitate for our people? And then while I know in the previous law we put in place, you know, that this needs to be done on an annual basis, I mean, I understand perhaps why we need to register our cars, because we need to ensure that they're safe on the road and it goes through an annual safety check. Uh, but I don't know. I mean, maybe we need to go back and reexamine. Do we need to register an animal every year? I don't want to get into Gestapo tactics of becoming, you know, in order to own a pet on Guam, that we have all these restrictions in place, especially when we have a lot of people, you know, who are varying levels of, uh, awareness about how they should take care of their pets. I mean, we still have people that tie their, their dogs to, uh, you know, these huge chains, particularly these pit bulls, you know, these huge chains that even probably we ourselves can't even pick, you know, lift because it's so heavy, uh, or tie a dog under a tree with no, you know, no shelter, no consistent water, no consistent food being provided. Uh, and they consider that a pet. That's my pet guarding my house. To, to other people who, you know, their, their, their pets, be it their cat or their dog or their bird, you know, they consider them like children and, and they take care of them as such. I mean, they, they go out of their way to make sure their pets are groomed and, and, you know, uh, fluffy looks good and smells good every day. So we have such a, you know, a, a, a vast length between maybe not being such a responsible pet owner to people that literally look at their pets as, as their children. Um, my concern with this moving forward is I think when more people realize the ramifications, and I'm sure it's convenient for the government, I'm sure for our mayors who are very challenged in dealing with these not so pleasant issues in the village, uh, you know, this definitely adds to their list, all the way down to having to collect dead dogs on the road that have been run over. But I think when the public realizes the ramifications, if they've got four or five dogs, what the cost is going to be to be required to microchip their pets? Um, I did check with several veterinary, uh, clinics here on the island. One raised, uh, the price, the price was at $50 per, per animal. The other one was $55. The higher end one was $75 for microchip and an additional cost that would have to be paid for the, um, the visit to the veterinarian. So if you multiply that cost, I think when people realize the ramifications of that, that is going to be considerable. Will they do it voluntarily? Probably not. And are we going to penalize them for that? Um, again, I go back to the issue of the ability to the government of Guam. How can it help facilitate registering pets? Because we're, we're looking at increasing the price during this time of pandemic. We want to increase the price from $5 to $20 a year. And then we want to charge this to them every year. Um, I understand the fact that, you know, programs, we want to be able to look at funding sources. But again, I, I just have reservation because I, I don't know why. Why is it just in the case, uh, you know, what are we going to do next? Are we going to register cows? Are we going to register pigs? I mean, I think we just need to seriously look. And while I understand we need to address the solution of, of the stray animal population on Guam, I don't want to penalize, um, you know, our, our family owners here that do have dogs and cats and, and simply just have them and want to have them in their homes. They provide them companionship. They provide them comfort. And I, I don't like the degree of restriction that this thing will represent in top of the cost. I mean, you know, Senator Munya Barnes had mentioned, you know, and I think it's wonderful with her partnership that that can be facilitated with, uh, the government of Taiwan and other jurisdictions. And we, of course, we've had visiting vets on a regular basis that have come into Guam to provide these spay and neuter clinics. I've actually been fortunate enough to be able to take my pet. I know our, our mayor, uh, Mayor Gogwi in Chalampago in the past, when these opportunities have been provided, have always provided our community center there, uh, to help facilitate these projects. I've actually been able to take my pets there also in the past to have, uh, participate in a spay and neuter clinic. I think we need to look at it proactively from that standpoint versus looking at how are we going to further restrict and, and make the cost, you know, increase the cost to our island residents. Because I just, you know, Tan Maria and San Jose, I mean, we want to get down to the basics. Are they going to go to their vet on top of the cost of simply taking a pet to a vet? I mean, on average, I'm not, I know when I take my, my pet to the vet for whatever the case may be, I'm not going to walk out of there with less than a hundred, sometimes several hundreds, sometimes thousands. Uh, people kind of think, well, you know, you're taking, it's not that, sometimes it's just as expensive as, as going, taking a human to, to a clinic, uh, to see a doctor. It's, it's not cheap. And then on top of that, now we want to require them to microchip at this expense, especially most pet owners. Uh, you know, some have one, others have several pets. And, and I'm sure we're aware of that even within our own families. So I'm concerned about the costs. I'm concerned about the increased restrictions that I think even further. If we're worried about our people, you know, being, you know, pulling away and not wanting to comply, I think these additional requirements and costs, uh, and restrictions are going to dis- discourage our community from wanting to, to be more engaged with the government and more responsible. So I simply raise those concerns. I really think they're going to be real practical concerns when, when people, you know, average people out there understand what the implications are. I understand the objective of, of this sponsor and wanting to put this forth because we all want a safe community. We don't like seeing these poor animals, you know, being run over on the road and not having homes and, and suffering as we see many of them. But I think we need to look at alternative, uh, options that we can provide versus continuing to increase costs and penalizing our community for wanting to be pet owners. So with that, Mr. Chair, uh, I have no further comments or, or questions, but thank you, everyone, for including our mayor, Jesse, uh, well, our both mayors, and our Mayor Gogwi also from Chalampago for coming and providing their testimony, also to Cyrus and his continued work, uh, for helping to take care of and protect our animals out there. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Brown. Um, yes, I sh- share some of the same concerns and I'll go to you in a little bit, Director Chelsa. I do, uh, share some of the concerns with regards to, for example, the GAIN facility, uh, just not being big enough, as you mentioned in the beginning of, uh, of, of your discussion, Senator Brown. Uh, I, yes, the GAIN facility's not big enough. I've spoken with, uh, Cyrus and, about it. And, uh, we've actually put in, in our request, uh, to the governor for how to spend the, uh, um, uh, ARP funding, if there's a way, if it's possible, if, if the governor could use some of that funding to go towards expansion of the GAIN facility. I'm not sure if it's going to happen, but we have put the request in. Uh, hopefully there's some way that's found to expand that, uh, GAIN facility. And then I also know that, um, Cyrus and the Department of Agriculture have been working with finding other ways creatively to sort of expand it. I know recently some work was done on it by, um, volunteer, uh, members of, I believe it was, correct me if I'm mistaken, the Red Horse Squadron. They did some work up there to do some repairs and maintenance, if I'm not mistaken. So those are some things, uh, you know, we've all been looking for ways to improve and expand the facility. Uh, so that's definitely a concern. We do need to expand the facility. And, um, and yes, I'm also concerned about, uh, how currently, um, pet owners aren't registering their pets. And this is something that I have brought up to the Department of Agriculture. How can we, um, encourage pet owners to register their pets? They're not even registering currently. That's why we included in the previous version, something that would involve the veterinarians, but that didn't, uh, fly. The veterinarians were completely opposed to it, didn't want to be liable for that at all. So I'm open to, uh, uh, suggestions on how we can improve, uh, pet registration at the same time while not being too, uh, restrictive or onerous on the private citizens of Guam. So Director Chelsa, is there anything you'd like to add along those lines?
Yes, thank you, Senator. And thank you, Senator Brown, for, um,
Director Chelsa, could you see if something's blocking your microphone? It sounds muffled and it's kind of on and off. It's, it, your audio's been going up and down.
Chair, let me plug in some earphones and see if this improves it. Can you hear me now? Is that better?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Um, well, thank you, Senator Brown, for the meaningful perspective. I just wanted to, um, mention a couple of things we thought about and considered, and perhaps with Senator Rajal, we can revisit some of these. Um, when we were, when we started pushing out, um, press releases about people were registering their dogs, we also added in that, um, they could, uh, microchip their dogs with GAIN. Then Cyrus mentioned, GAIN charges $10. So we did consider the fact that, uh, for people who go to their vets, it's a lot more. Um, and then with this, with the mayors, um, and how we started our stray roundup program, the only challenge, or one of the challenges, um, with the stray roundup was that we did have GAIN volunteers who wanted to accompany the mayors, um, and microchip in the villages, because we know we're not going to get Tan Maria to drive up to Jigo to microchip her dog. Um, but then it was also, uh, at the time where we just started vaccination. So, um, as he should be, Cyrus was concerned about their volunteers and their health. So that was another challenge, but it's not something that's been removed from the drawing board. And we absolutely want to have our GAIN volunteers accompany the mayors, um, when we do roundups in the village, so that they can be there to microchip people who are willing to do that at the time. Um, and GAIN, uh, was still going to charge just the $10 for the microchip itself. And we also did budget that into our proposal for, um, the stray animal roundup. We're still waiting to hear about that, but we've also been talking with the Lieutenant Governor's Office about identifying funding to help support the stray animal roundup expansion if the proposal isn't approved by Department of Interior. And currently, it's already in Guam statute that if you own more than four dogs, you're supposed to be registered as a breeder. So these are one of the laws that we need to work on enforcing. And that was going to come secondary with trying to push out more people to register their pets. Um, and that is not, it's not just a Department of Agriculture regulation, but it's also out of consideration for the animal feces. And if you have too many pets on your property, what's happening with the feces? So it's a sanitation issue too. Um, and if you have more than four dogs, then you need to register with Revan Tax as a breeder. Um, and people who are breeding their dogs after the first round of the first cycle of puppies, I guess, if you breed more after that, then you're supposed to start paying, um, or not paying, but identifying that income to Revan Tax. So we, that's another leg of enforcement or regulatory, um, enforcement that we're working on as well. Um, and in prior conversations last term, when we talked about this with Senator Rajal, we wanted to tie, um, the pet registration to the rabies vaccination, so that it wouldn't be an annual cost, but rather every three years. Um, and perhaps that's something, um, that we can bring back again, uh, Senator Rajal. So I just wanted to add, um, those, uh, to point out that those, those are things, some of the concerns you raised, Senator Brown, are things we've been, um, considering and discussing right now, too.
Mr. Chair, if I could just comment, I, and I, I appreciate those efforts. And I'm wondering, you know, maybe this has to be tiered because, um, you know, if I have more than four dogs, I'm, I'm a breeder, but I, I might not be breeding my dogs. I may have four neutered dogs that I've adopted that, you know, I have, I have a property large enough, I'm maintaining proper sanitation. I mean, what if I had four little chihuahuas? I mean, I think we just need to put this in perspective because I, I, I think if we get too extreme, I think we're going to get people that are going to withdraw from this process entirely and not want to engage with the government. I mean, we have people that are being raped and murdered on this island and more serious offenses that are happening to our community, and we're challenged to be able to address that to begin with. To, to start imposing, and yes, while we have these laws in place, perhaps again, we need to go back and reexamine, how does that get us to our desired objective of minimizing the stray dog population that is, you know, sometimes a danger to people within our own villages and within our own community, on top of the fact that these poor animals don't have homes, they, they, they're not properly being taken care of. Uh, they take the fact that they don't, you know, probably have consistent food to eat. I mean, all of those things are, are very disheartening to even think of the realities of what we're dealing with. But I think to the degree of where we're at, especially in it, when as a government, we're not really making it user friendly to help people facilitate what we need to do. Um, you know, I don't know, maybe we register an island, uh, an animal once in their lifetime until they pass away. Then if you get a new animal, you register it. I, I don't understand why we may want to. And while I know the law's been in place, I've supported in the past, you know, as time goes on, you need to reevaluate. Is that something we need to do? Do we need to have people, what is the purpose of having them re-register, uh, their animals every year and then at a cost? Then we want to charge them on top of that. And I understand the need to try and pay for these programs, but I just think with the situation, you know, having lived on Guam most of my life, being a pet owner almost all my life, uh, dealing on a regular basis with animals that are dumped and abused. I mean, you know, uh, my family's house is on, on the main road of Pago Bay. We on a regular basis have animals that are dumped there. A number of the pets that we have are adoptees that have come, come to our gate or my parents' back gate, uh, looking for food and love and attention. And, and, you know, we take them in. We can only take in so many. Uh, and I'm, I'm horrified that people would be so abusive to animals, even puppies, and, you know, throw them in a bag and dump them on the side of the road. I'm horrified by it. But I don't think the approach to addressing it is to come down harder or make it more difficult, because I think you're going to end up having people that are just going to withdraw and not, not pursue registering their animals or doing, you know, spaying or neutering their animals. I think if we can put forth more of these programs, I mean, wonderful, if we're able to do it for $10, $10 a microchip and, and, and schedule these opportunities for people and get that awareness, because we definitely still need to get a lot of awareness out there. I know Cyrus and his group are really doing a great job, especially when there's cases of animal cruelty and they're out speaking out and bringing, you know, bringing these issues to our attention and then also wanting to look at the individuals that are responsible for abusing these animals. Uh, we need more of that, more advocacy for them. But again, to increase the cost, to mandate these requirements without the resources out there to facilitate these things happening. these requirements without the resources out there to facilitate these things happening, if we put that in place and then gave our community time to absorb into this and be engaged in this process, then maybe after that, we can look at enforcement. But I just think with all the other serious issues that are facing our community and are wanting to get the support of the people to buy into this, perhaps the timing and the requirements that are very costly for people, even right now, if you're going to call, I call my veterinarian, it's almost taking several months. And this is my regular veterinarian I've been going through for years. On average, it takes several months to get an appointment to have your animal spayed or neutered. And I've experienced that in more than one clinic because we've had to check with another clinic as an alternative to see if that can be done sooner. And if I'm doing that, I'm sure other people on Guam are also doing that. It might also be because our veterinarians are also, you know, only what, do we have 11 or 12? They might very much be backlog. So I'm just saying, I think there's a little more we need to go into this issue, to massage this issue, to facilitate especially positive engagement with the community, rather in this particular case of approaching it from an enforcement standpoint and increasing the costs. I think at the end, we all agree on the desired objective. I don't think we have any argument there. It's just the process of how we get there. But I thank you very much, Chelsa, for your input and your recommendations, and hopefully we can, we can come up with something more workable that won't discourage our people from wanting to be more engaged with the government on this process. Because I'll tell you, some people take their pet ownership very personal. You know, you're messing with a member of their family. What are you going to do? Take their dog away? Their cat? You know, the cat is out in the garage. I mean, I think you're going to end up, I think the government's going to end up with a lot of challenges with people just being very upset and very frustrated because, you know, they look at their pets as an extension of their families. So I thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for the additional time, but I appreciate the input. I'm just raising these concerns because I very much feel they do exist out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Yes, I agree that people do view pets as an extension of their family. But just like a member of your family, there is some responsibility you bear over your children to ensure that they're not running wild in the streets, for example, you know. So along those same lines, we do need to encourage some...
Looks like he's frozen, so we'll give him a minute.
Off of day, welcome back to the public hearing. We had some technical difficulties, and I was kicked offline, but we are back discussing Bill 135-36COR. Before I got kicked off, I was going to Director Chelsa to allow her to make some comments. Director?
Yes, Senator, thank you. I wanted to, I guess, maybe put it out there. Some of the comments Senator Brown made made me think perhaps we should, one of the incentives could be tying the pet registration to the microchip. So then if you get the microchip, you just pay for that pet registration fee once in the animal's lifetime rather than having to renew it. And then that'll encourage people to be microchipped, and we could trace the pet ownership from there on after. And then there was something else, and I forgot what it was, so I'll stop there.
It's okay. Cyrus, did you have something to add to that? Go ahead.
Thank you. I think some very, very excellent points have been brought up, and I think it's something that policymakers always struggle with, is, you know, that difficulty of both enforcement and getting people's buy-in and support and funding a project. I think there's definitely room for improved, or I guess, ease of use. So if we could adopt an online animal licensure program, like many places in the country have, that could be even something that could be funded under CARES Act or Recovery Act funds, that would be something that would be both cost-effective and just make it easier for people to be able to license their pets. It is actually important. We, at game, would like to see some sort of registration at least every few years because it is important for animals' tags to be up to date about their vaccinations. So if an animal bites a kid, and we want to be able to know if that dog has had its rabies shots or not. And so a once-in-a-lifetime registration is not going to be able to keep up to date with whether or not that dog has been getting its rabies shots. And in terms of the fee, I mean, again, we don't really have, you know, a strong opinion about whether the fee should be, you know, raised in line with inflation, should be wiped completely off. From our standpoint, it's just animal control, the shelter, these activities, which, you know, is a problem that the community feels is, you know, is a very high-profile problem, it needs to be properly funded. And whether that $400,000 to $800,000 comes from pet licensure fees from pet owners, or if it comes from some other source, ultimately, it needs to come from somewhere. And so we don't, you know, we could do away with the fee completely. But, you know, that $400,000 to $800,000 that this fee was aiming to sort of raise in order to cover it, I mean, it simply needs to come from somewhere. So we would be very strongly supportive of that funding coming from elsewhere. I think there are opportunities in other pots of funds as well. And I absolutely, you know, can see the difficulty of being able to implement something like this, especially if it's just out of the blue, in the middle of a pandemic, and it's, you know, $20 per animal times how many that you own. That would be difficult, absolutely. And I think that is something that as policymakers, that we would yield to the body in terms of how you think is best. But ultimately, there's no two ways about it. Animal control needs to be properly funded. Department of Ag has some wonderful employees there. But when you have one animal control officer for the entire island, and they're supposed to both enforce the law, protect kids, they get a phone call from a school because an animal's aggressive, they get a phone call from somebody because they saw a person take a cat and slam it into the ground. And, I mean, they're constantly inundated with some of the most horrific cases that you can deal with, and we have one person being able to respond to that. I know that we've hired, you know, that we're in the process of hiring a couple more, but it is nowhere near what we need for Guam. And so it's, right now, that problem is falling onto the mayors. It is unfair to them to be picking up the slack for something that should be properly funded. And so I completely agree with, you know, the mayor's earlier comment about, you know, unfunded mandates and such. And I know that's a constant struggle for the body, but animal welfare has just been so critically underfunded for so long that frankly, we shouldn't be surprised that we're in the horrible place that we are right now, and nothing is going to change unless we do start properly funding these activities. So and that's not a comment towards, you know, the senator's very good inquiries about this. I think I do share some of those concerns about raising prices. It's just, ultimately, I do hope that the body as a whole will support properly funding Department of Ag, of course, the animal shelter, and just, you know, helping the community address this problem that everybody's really, you know, really concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you, Cyrus. Mayor Gogwi, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Senator. And, you know, and I just wanted to chime in, even though I still intend to provide written testimony based on the comments that have been made thus far. You know, the situation and the whole intent of this law and the involvement of the mayors, et cetera, et cetera, on this animal control situation is, you know, I guess, to some extent, twofold. You know, we want to have a program that accounts for who owns pets, who owns these pets, you know, and whether or not these owned pets are being allowed to violate the leash law. So that when we feel that, or when we get reports that there's a dog roaming around the village, you know, we can scan and says, okay, somebody owns this pet, and we can issue a citation. Because oftentimes, you know, when I get reports and I've gone out to inquire on the report, and they, you know, the person reporting says, this family owns this dog, I go to the family, he says, oh, no, it's not our dog. And, you know, and then they say, well, the neighbors are saying you're feeding it. So if you feed it three consecutive days, you assume custody of these dogs. You know, and this is, well, no, we're just trying to be humane, you know, community members, and keeping these dogs from going out and fighting for food versus just giving them something to eat, you know, so they're not malnourished. But they don't want to assume ownership of the dogs for the same reason. You know, I guess, to some extent, you know, other people, you know, unlike other people who say, okay, a dog is stray, doesn't have a home, like Senator Brown, and I know her well, and I know that she, you know, as she had pointed out, that they have adopted many stray dogs that get dumped, you know, with, within their family property. And it is, because it's so close to a main road, and but they are, they are a very unique family, a caring family of pets. But for the most part, and you have other folks, but they don't want to assume ownership of those dogs. In other words, take on the responsibility of not only feeding it, but, you know, taking it to a vet, et cetera, et cetera. So what do we do with these dogs? And, you know, I think Cyrus, you know, I've heard him speak at the council, I still have some issues with regard to this trap, spay, neuter, and release, because it doesn't reduce the population anytime soon. Because ultimately, if these pets, you know, more than anything, these animals, these dogs, you know, have a hard time finding food, then they're going to fight for that food, you know, or try to locate a source. And if they have to, fight for the food. Ergo, you see these vicious pets, you know, roaming the neighborhood and feeling that their turf, their area that they've settled in is being threatened, and food that they're protecting is going to be taken away from them. That's where the mayors are really concerned, is we need to address a stray dog problem, which is, I guess, a different issue than what we're talking about, you know, reg licensing and microchipping dogs, is how are we going to fund animal control? That was the whole idea of the laws, I think, in the first place, is not just to let, you know, hold people accountable for licensing and registering their pets, but to try to find a way to, you know, to fund these programs, you know, these, you know, right now, unfunded mandates, to figure out a mechanism to fund them, because they are mandates. And I, you know, out of respect for Cyrus, I know that game does a lot. But you can't be a public official or a citizen of this island and not care about how these programs are funded. Because if it's not funded, then it's never implemented. And if it's not implemented, the mandate is still on the books, and they call the mayors, hey, mayor, you know, this is a mandate, how come it's not being done? And, you know, you're supposed to go out and give tickets to people who let their dogs loose, so why aren't you doing it? Well, who owns the damn dog? Excuse my language. But it is so frustrating that we get all these calls. And then when we say, okay, well, we don't know who owns the dogs, I can't issue a citation, we reach out to animal control to assist in capturing these dogs. Obviously, they're down to one, you know, animal control officer. We're not trained, we're not, our people are not trained, they're not skilled at catching these dogs. And then, you know, if we don't do it just right, then, you know, depending on the neighborhood we catch these dogs at, reports will sometimes be turned in on the mayors because we're doing it inehumanely. So, I mean, you know, something's got to be done, and something's got to occur. And we are leaders of this island. We got to figure it out. We got to figure out the solution that's going to take to not only find a way to know what pets are truly family pets, and then of those pets that aren't truly family pets, to recognize them as, you know, stray animals. And as stray animals, when they're captured, what do we do with them? You know, and I'm not encouraging euthanizing these animals. I know, I feel for Senator Brown, if she, in fact, hasn't seen these truckloads of dogs that have been euthanized or pets, animals that have been euthanized and taken to the order dump, because it's a horrible sight. You know, but by God, you know, if Cyrus's claim is correct, and we have 24,000 stray pets out roaming this island, most of which are not spayed and neutered, and he's indicating roughly a 3% increase in the population every year, what are we doing to correct that problem? Because I'm telling you now, it's a problem. And, you know, and all of you know that I've been a mayor for 12 years. It's been a constant problem, you know, for 12 years. And this bill, you're talking about licensing pets, registering pets, now upgrading it to microchipping pets. This law has been a part of the Guam Code articulated since the early 1990s. And because we're not doing it well, I mean, and it's no, it's no fault of Department of Agriculture because of the limited resources they have in implementing these programs, but we're not doing it well. We don't even have a modicum of funding available to, you know, to truly manage and implement this license registration program. So it's us to figure out, well, what's the hiccup? And how do we correct it? So, one, we can license and account for these family pets. And whether it's annually or biannually or every five years, to me, you know, we can figure that out and make it reasonable for people who have family pets. But on the flip side of the coin, the enforcement of these non-family pets... But on the flip side of the coin, the enforcement of these non-family pets, and how do we manage that population? The stray dog population that is becoming more and more aggressive, you know, within all of the villages. Because you will not find a village from Jigo all the way down to Yamatic. And I think, I think Chelsea will verify where there hasn't been a complaint from a resident, reported by a mayor about, you know, a vicious pet. And you know, I tell you what, when it becomes a vicious pet, when it's reported as a vicious pet, I'm not gonna send my staff out there. They don't get hazard pay, they don't get, you know, all, all of those other things that law enforcement officers get. You know, that these animal control officers get or, you know, the police get, et cetera, et cetera. The mayor's staff does not get that. You know, that, that extra funding, you know, because they, they place themselves in harm's way. So I just, you know, if, if this bill is not ready, you know, to be passed, you know, maybe we do need to stay, step back and truly understand what the intent, what the purpose of this bill is. And maybe the, the entire section of law that we have. And what can we do to make sure that when it's, when it's, when it's, as it sits in our books, as it sits in our Guam Code annotated, it's truly a program that can be implemented and, and, and serve its purpose of accounting for family pets? And then the second, to me, you know, to most mayors, the most major issue is, is addressing the stray dog population or the stray animal population in this community. Because it's not just dogs, we, there's a growing problem with cats, uh, and, and this community. So we think that, we think that, uh, you know, the, the brown tree snake is being, has been a threat to our, our, uh, bird population. I'm telling you now, 10 years from now, we're gonna see these cats, you know, taking over and, uh, the, the role of the, the brown tree snakes and its impact on our bird population. So I, I just wanted, you know, I appreciate everybody's comments. But, you know, we need to stay focused as leaders on the whole purpose of this section of law. And of what can we do to improve it to accomplish those two things? You know, making sure that we can tell the difference between a family pet and a stray animal. And then how do we fund the stray animal pro, program? And, and, and get these stray dogs off the street and adopted? And get these, these stray dogs from turning into vicious dogs? You know, and becoming a threat to the population. I mean, that's really, I think, you know, as simply as I can state it, the, the root concerned and what needs to be addressed in this bill or any bill that relates to animal control. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mayor Gogui. Cyrus, I saw you raise your hand. Did you have something to add?
I, I'll make it very quick and thank you, Mayor. I think those are, those are really excellent points. I just wanted to add to that, uh, ju- just some additional things that I, I, I do hope that we, we, we proceed with this legislation as a whole because there are some things in there that, that would help us in the very near future with especially volunteer veterinarians to be able to provide spay neuter services, which we actually did in, in the good mayor's, uh, village, uh, a couple of years ago. And that was a phenomenal event. And then, and thank you, Mayor, for, for really making that happen. Trap neuter release, uh, I just wanted to clarify that that is not, our vision for that is not, we would capture all animals, including vicious animals and, and, you know, release them again. That is something that we do not support because we do not want dangerous animals out there that harm both humans and animals. So those aggressive animals do need to be, the truly feral aggressive animals do need to be caught and euthanized. TNR is more for animals that are the community-owned animals, the ones where nobody wants to claim ownership and license them, but they would get upset if you were to take that animal away. So the TNR is to address that, but we also don't see TNR as being something that we, uh, TNR is short for trap neuter release. We don't see TNR being something that we would implement right away. There's so much other work to do, especially with just spaying and neutering people's own pets, that TNR is something that we envisioned being down the road and we'd want to implement that with mayor's help. And, um, but if we're opening up this section of law to, to make improvements, we might as well put some clarification in there just to show how TNR would be implemented so that it's legally clarified how it would be done, that it's overseen by Department of Agriculture. It can't simply be done by anybody who wants to capture an animal then release it. And then, um, absolutely, you know, everything you said about funding, I think, I think is very important to emphasize. Guam used to have twenty-five, over twenty-five animal control officers. And so now that we're down to one, we've, yeah, we're just unfairly putting this on, on trade staff at the mayor's offices. And that's not something that, that, uh, that, uh, you know, they should be contending with. So anyways, thank you, Mayor, for just allowing me to add that additional stuff.
Thank you Cyrus. Okay, um. All right, I'd like to go now to Senator Jim Moilen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you for proposing this bill as well. Like, I'm in favor of the measure. Uh, anything we could do as a start and for, uh, to control our feral animals, I think is important. Uh, I want to thank the, the hard work that Cyrus and has put into this and with the cooperation of the mayors and also Department of Agriculture. Uh, Director Chelsa, I, I do support, I'm hoping to see in your budget request that there is an increase for the officers that you need and that the governor's budget would also support that too. So we can start with the enforcements. Uh, for the mayors, I, I feel for you. Um, I'm hoping this bill would do something and as you did in your statements, support the bill. And, and therefore I, I support you with this bill as well. But maybe, you know, I, I'm sure we can come up with other solutions later down the line, but, but let's just get it going, let's just do something, uh, Mr. Chairman. And, and I, that's why I'm in favor of this bill. And maybe in the, in the meantime, the mayors can, uh, what we used to do in the old days when commissioners put on that speaker on top of your, your pickup trucks. And this time you can play that music, "Who let the dogs out?" Because you're coming there to round them out in, in the meantime, uh, with the support of Department of Agriculture and also Games, Games Volunteer Program. So thank you for the bill and I do support the bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Moilen. Senator Tiedeby?
So just mostly, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity, and I thank everyone who's here today. Um, the mayors and of course Cyrus and of course the director. Um, a lot was said, you know, uh, and some concerns that I, I, I had were actually addressed earlier. Uh, some of them were actually regarding a constituent who talked to me regarding the yearly fee was an issue with that individual person. And, you know, I, I told constituents, when they have concerns like that, it's important for them to come to the public hearings. Um, and Zoom has made it convenient for them, but a lot of them do work. So it makes it very difficult to come and testify about how they feel about particular parts of, uh, a proposed legislation. However, I did attend, um, the meeting that was held on March 2nd. Just this year regarding the stray animal population. So I'd like to ask Chelsea, since that meeting that we had on March 2nd, um, toward reducing the stray animal population, um, what has been taken since? What, what has been done since that meeting? This is for the director.
Um, well, thank you, Senator, for the question. Um, we've been working with Mayor Paco, who oversees the stray animal roundup committee for the mayor's council. So we have not weekly meetings, but we stay in contact almost every couple of days about how this process has been going. We still try to facilitate any sort of challenges that rise, whether it's, um, they're bringing in too many animals at one time or there's not enough clear communication, um, between any of the different parties involved. Um, we've been working with the Booney Flight Project to export puppies off island. Um, I think with this last, this third round of pets, of puppies leaving, we'll be hitting a hundred. And now the lieutenant governor has also tasked BSP to start assisting us with how we can make the flights more cost-effective. Because at one point where it costs one pet owner twenty-one hundred dollars to bring three cats to Guam, um, when she tried to bring those same cats in this last, this past year, it shot up to eleven thousand dollars. Um, so we're working with them on having both, um, military leadership and our government leadership, uh, I guess, sort of initiate a conversation or figure out how to make it more cost-effective for consumers to, um, ship pets. And with the Booney Flight Project, the, we're having a meeting today, actually, after this public hearing with our territorial veterinarians so that we can start offering the health certificates or, um, that they were paying for, um, that cost upwards of five thousand dollars each time around. They were gonna ship a group of pets off. So we're making small steps, um, but they're steps. And we also have a meeting coming up with PETA that we wanted to bring Gain into because now there's a possibility for something that's called a sterilization cookie. And we wanted to discuss that, like, to find out how beneficial or effective that would be for our island. So then rather than even having invasive surgeries on the pets, it would be a matter of feeding them a cookie. And that's sort of new technology that's coming around. And so we wanted to discuss that with PETA, which is the International People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals. Um, and we also had our interviews for animal control officers. We also just announced the animal control supervisor position. Um, and we have two more interviews scheduled for the same animal control officer positions. And that should close out our, um, hopefully, close out our selection for filling the two spaces, plus now the added position of a supervisor. Um, so that's happened since March.
It sounds good. It sounds like you're making some progress here. It's, it's so good to hear that you have additional two individuals, uh, to assist that one, um, control officer, you know, and, and I'm, I'm hoping that comes, when is that supposed to, um, finalize these two positions? The supervisor and the other control officer?
The supervisor, the supervisor position, we just sent out to, um, BBMR to approve the funding for it and then it'll go to DOA. So it won't be announced yet probably for, um, I would assume a few weeks, a month, um, given, you know, DOA's load. And then the interviews for, we had five applicants or six applicants on the list. One of them couldn't make it till now. So we're trying to schedule that interview and then another substitute applicant. Or, so hopefully next week we'll have the interviews done for those two.
Okay, I was, I spoke too soon. I was thinking they're already on board and you've already gone through the process. So it looks like it's gonna take about another month or so for these individuals to come on board. And that's gonna be very helpful. Um, I know during that meeting in March 2nd, uh, uh, I, I mentioned, uh, to the governor's special assistant, um, former mayor Lizama about finding the funding for Department of Agriculture. You know, I mean, she has the transfer authority, uh, to utilize funds from other areas to put in places that are in dire need. Um, has former mayor Lizama, their special assistant, uh, Lizama approached you yet with regards to any feedback from the governor, being able to transfer that money into, into your agency?
Um, he did. And then at the same time during our identification task force, Lieutenant Governor Tenorio, um, he did indicate that they are really close to being able to give us more support in that area.
But nothing solid yet, no funding yet?
Um, no, not at this time.
Okay. You know, one of the things too, Mr. Chair, is that we're sitting here today and it's, it seems to be the same individuals again. We're, we're not getting any input from the public. You know, I was hoping to find additional. I do understand people are working and stuff, but maybe this is an opportunity for the mayors. Um, President Alec, have you had an opportunity to have a village meeting with your constituents in your village to discuss this piece of legislation or even yourself, Mayor Jesse Gogui? But I'll, I'll start with the president first, um, in recognizing him and also seeking your comment with, with that type of input from the public. Because like Senator Brown said, and I understand her concerns, these pets are, are like an extended family member. You know, and it's important that, uh, you know, there's a lot of emotions tied to that. And we could get a lot of kickback if we don't get enough input or, um, individuals coming forward to discuss their, their, you know, aspirations for this or what they want and what not want to happen.
Well, in PD, we don't, we have not announced a, a separate public hearing on this bill. And I'm not sure if any other mayor has done that. And that's just something we don't typically do on a, on a general bill unless it's particularly, specifically related to the village. Uh, but I understand your concern. I think the legislature does a good job about publishing the notices. And so I think this is, you know, and then with, with, with the digital age, I mean, they, they see this on YouTube, Facebook, it's, it's all over the place. So I think there's, the opportunity is there, uh, just probably a lack of interest perhaps. Yeah, we've, uh, we don't, we don't specifically hold, uh, public hearings in the village at the village level for, for general.
Uh, thank you so much, Mr. President, with regards to that. As, as far as public, uh, publishing notices, Senator Brown can talk to you about that one. As far as this legislature publishing notices, you know, it's, uh, it's a little short on that. But, um, I think, you know, the input from your constituents are so important. I'm sure you, it's, it's a matter of even if you don't have a village organization meeting, uh, to actually go into the, um, your, and ask your constituents about them, kind of educating them on the bill and seeing what their perspective is. I think it's, it's very important, uh, that we get that input, uh, from them. And, you know, because I know that some mayors are very reluctant about giving any kind of citations to their constituents. That's one of the biggest problems. Because mayors want to get re-elected, they don't want to give, you know, citations to any particular family. And, and I understand their concern, but, um, I think it's important that we reach out. Uh, Mayor Gogui, or, oh, he's on the line, it looked like he just jumped on to a phone call. So, Mr. Chair, I think, uh, the possibility of, of incorporating more of the, our, our community involvement other than those who are here today is so important right now. Um, I too have a concern with the yearly renewal fee. But I understand that this bill was formulated so it could sustain itself and all, all that's needed. So I appreciate that. The four hundred thousand dollars that was talked about even during the March 2nd meeting on what would, what it would take to, um, you know, support this, uh, this measure and, and try to do as much as they can to keep the stray dogs under control, stray animals period, under control. Cats, cats as well, enforcement, enforcement is a key. Um, so other than that, um, Mr. Chair, I won't continue on. I think some of my questions were, and my concerns too, were, were brought forth and incorporating the community involved. So greatly appreciate the opportunity and thank you to all who's here. If Mayor Gogui wants to incorporate, he's still on the phone, but, uh, I really think the mayor should, uh, have a village meeting. Oh, there he is, Mayor Gogui. Um, have you had an opportunity to have a meeting with your constituents or seek, um, their concerns for this legislation?
Actually not, you know, and, uh, you know, uh, in fact, I, I feel, I feel very blessed that I have two constituents, you know, uh, from my village that are very vocal about all issues that, uh, are before the legislature. And that's the vice speaker, uh, Mooney Warrens, and of course, uh, Senator Brown. They're both from my village or they live in my village. But, you know, uh, in fact, you know, I can say that the reason why, um, I haven't been really pushing a lot of issues that come out of the legislature recently is, uh, I've been homebound, um, for, for medical reasons up until last week. And so I'm doing much better. I'm actually, uh, back to work at the office and, uh, and holding these, uh, public meetings is just not something that I, um, I've, I've had, uh, time to focus on. As, you know, in fact, what I've been focusing on, given, you know, the health challenges that I've had is our multi-purpose center. And so we're still trying to move that forward so we can break ground in September. That's what I've been focused on.
Well, thank you, Mary, and thank you for being able to continue to participate in public hearings via virtual. And I'm sure a lot of your constituents to probably, you know, and I'm glad to hear you're doing much better, by the way. And I'm sure your constituents too would appreciate, um, virtual meetings as well instead of even in public. So, uh, and I'm sure you know how to put a virtual meeting together. So I, I think there are every possibility to reach out to constituents. And it needs to be done, especially for this bill because of the sensitivity on, when it comes to their animals or part of their, you know, an animal that's considered part of their family. It's very, uh, various, uh, not only sentimental, but, uh, what's the word I'm looking at? Senator Joe?
I'm not sure.
Not just sentimental, but it's very touchy. You know, it's a very touchy situation. So thank you, Senator Joe, for the opportunity. I'm sure we're gonna be doing some work on this legislation. And I'm right there with you to help out any way I can. Thank you.
Sensitive. You're looking for the word sensitive. Yeah, it truly is.
And emotional. Yes, thank you, Mayor GW rules. Thank you.
But, you know, and Senator Brown articulated it quite well. You know, family pets are a very sensitive issue, you know, and having them, you know, having them, requiring them to register their pets. I mean, for the most part, I'm sure many of them would want to register their pets and would be willing to pay the fee. And have them microchipped. The frequency, I kind of agree with Senator Brown. You know, doing it every year, is that reasonable for these people who are caring for their pets, doing the right thing? And maintaining their family pet. But as I'd mentioned earlier, my concern is not the people that are really trying to follow the law. My concern is the people that aren't following the law. And enforcing, you know, those who aren't following the law or finding a way to adequately enforce those who aren't following the law. And more importantly, those pets that aren't claimed by anyone. What we truly refer to as our stray dog population. How are we going to address it? How are we going to fund it? Because it's not cheap. It's not cheap. And so this whole animal control law was the genesis, I believe. If you look back and the intent, I think when the bill was passed in 1993, was to try to generate revenue for Department of, or actually, I think it was Public Health at the time, because they were the ones who were originally responsible for animal control back in the early 90s, is to try to create a program that allowed them to generate revenue. You know, and, you know, what concerns me ultimately is sometimes we, you know, even though we have fiscal notes and all of these things, you know, sometimes we miss the boat. We miss the boat as far as truly what it's going to take to run a program and then developing a program that allowed us to generate revenue to not only run the program, but to maintain it over the long haul. And, and, and it's really gotta stop. I mean, it's really gotta stop because it jeopardizes all of what we do as a government. It jeopardizes programs when we underfund things. It jeopardizes the maintenance of our facilities when we underfund. You know, waste of generating revenue to maintain our facilities or not providing enough monies in our budget to maintain those facilities. It's just all of this underfunding or unfunded mandates has really gotta stop. Because when these mandates exist, you know, people, like you said, technology is readily available to people in general. And so they'll go into the Guam Code annotated and they'll call me up and says, you know, Mayor, Title V, Chapter 40, you know, says you're supposed to do this. And so we want to know why you're not doing it, you know? And so, so then I try to explain, you know, there's no money or there's, you know, and, but people, the community residents are just tired of hearing that. You know, they're tired of hearing it. And I can tell you what I think can be done to generate additional revenue. But, I mean, that's always a controversial discussion. How do we generate enough funds to pay for the programs we're mandating? We, the government of Guam, are mandating to be done. You know, rather than implementing these programs via law and it becomes an unfunded mandate.
Thank you, Mayor Gogui. No, I truly agree with you. Unfunded mandates. Many of the bills, if you look at the legislature's website and look at these bills that require, you know, the public as well as government agencies to do something, and there's no funding behind it. It's fluff. It's actually fluff. I too get very frustrated too. And I know this piece of legislation is to move forward on a program that's put into place that's not gonna fund the program itself. That comes with the government budget on hiring these individuals to enforce it. The majority of it, 80% of all programs are about enforcing it. You implement a law, you need enforcement. And this money that is set aside for these individual, these three individuals to be placed on board is a beginning compared to only one person being there. So the budget bill is coming up for review soon. And I know that I will, along with the Oversight Chair of Agriculture, will be advocating for that additional funding to secure these animal control agents to be on board. So that is a different story, but as far as these registering, that's important because we need the data. We need the data. This helps us with grants as well to collect information on the stray issues in Guam. That only helps when securing these grants. So I greatly appreciate it, Mr. Chair, for the time. And thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tidaway. I do believe we have another person who's joined us to provide testimony from the Booney Flight Project. Lauren Cabrera, if you are still there, please turn on your camera and your microphone.
Hi.
Hi, Hafaday. Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for having me.
Begin by introducing yourself and then you may provide your testimony.
Awesome. My name's Lauren Cabrera. I actually work out here as a nurse practitioner, but I'm very involved in dog rescuing. And I'm the co-founder of Booney Flight Project, where the organization that just started up in April, by the end of the month, we will have shipped 100 Booney dogs to homes stateside. So we're, you know, excited about hopefully reducing the stray dog population in a little way, you know, we're not the solution. But I've also been working with Cyrus and Chelsa on kind of looking at this spay-neuter program. And that could be a long-term solution for the island's dog population. So I wrote a testimony I can read. "As we know, our beautiful island has a dog overpopulation problem. While the Department of Agriculture and the mayor's offices and GAIN work diligently to control this population, it's imperative to have regulations in place to further address this issue. This bill does an exemplary job in creating and defining these regulations that could ultimately lead to a big reduction in our dog population. The mandates requiring pet licensure and securing of free-roaming dogs is key. I just got home actually, and in the street, I had three adult dogs and four tiny puppies run up to me. It's just, you know, that happens all the time here. By securing dogs who are not sterilized, we can prevent this. Dog reproduction and unwanted litters can be prevented. By requiring pet licensure and microchipping, hopefully people will be disincentivized to casually own large amount of dogs that are unsecured and will hopefully just start keeping only dogs that they can actually secure and care for." For the regulations in the bill regarding visiting and volunteer veterinarians, removing the eight-day limitation on temporary licensure will encourage more veterinarians to assist us with spay-neuter campaigns that are necessary to control the dog population. I have actually found many veterinarians from the mainland who want to come out and volunteer here, but it's a long flight. If they can only come for eight days, a lot of them aren't really interested. They'd like to stay a bit longer. Giving the veterinarians more time to practice here will allow them to enjoy their stay on Guam while maximizing the amount of time they can help us with the sterilization surgeries through the program that's being planned. When 75% of the island's dogs are sterilized, we'll develop a sort of herd immunity to further dog reproduction. And our population should be kept at a stable, more manageable level. This will require many, many hours of work from veterinarians. But there's a lot of veterinarians who want to come out, which is awesome. So removing that eight-day temporary license, you know, restriction is key for the program to succeed. One point I would like to make though, I think the intact pet entry fee of $120 is quite low compared to the cost per puppy from a purebred dog litter on Guam. Many purebred puppies are sold for $1,000 to even $2,500 on island. I would urge the consideration of raising this fee. Because if you have a dog with like 10 puppies in their litter and you're making $2,000 per puppy, $120 is nothing. It may be a good way to generate revenue for the program and maybe disincentivize some casual breeding. I would like to also point out, in Section 3F, it says, "All pets over the age of six months given for adoption shall be sterilized and licensed before being released to new owners." This is definitely really important to prevent the overpopulation problem. Six months is actually quite a generous age for sterilization surgery, though. The ASPCA recommends sterilization surgery as young as eight weeks of age. And the American Veterinary Medicines Association does not have a specific stance, but for places like in our situation with the dog population problem, they recommend it. And it's standard at most shelters stateside to spay and neuter puppies as young as eight weeks old. So that could be something to consider. I think that's a really great, you know, spaying and neutering dogs before they're adopted is going to help a lot. In order for sterilization surgeries that will be required to adopt animals, it's really important that GAIN be given the resources to hire their own shelter veterinarian. The impact of a shelter veterinarian would be really tremendous here. They could help, you know, sterilize animals being adopted and also help with the stray dog problem, which would be really wonderful. I think our goal with this bill should be to make spay and neuter of animals and securing them the norm. And this bill is really wonderful. It takes a lot of important steps towards achieving that goal. And my organization fully supports it. That's all.
Thank you very much, Lauren, for your testimony. With that, I'd like to allow Senator Tony Ada, if he's got any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions. Just I look forward, thank everybody for their testimonies and the questions that came up during the public hearing. I look forward to working with you, Mr. Chairman, and our committee members to see what we can do to improve the bill and make it stronger so that we can go ahead and move it on to our agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Ada. And with that, any other of my colleagues have any other questions or comments that they'd like to bring up at this time? All right. And if no one else has any questions or comments, this will conclude our discussion on Bill Number 135-36. We will recess for five minutes before we proceed with discussions on Bill Number 134-36. Thank you, everyone, for your participation in today's public hearing. Thank you. All right, Hafaday, and good morning. This virtual public hearing will now reconvene for the committee to hear and accept testimony on Bill Number 134-36 COR, an act to amend Section 60354 of Article 3, Chapter 60, Title 5, Guam Code annotated relative to removing the minimum acreage for protection of farmers, introduced by myself, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senators Joe Sinagastin, Peter Turlohi, Tony Ada, Telo Tidaway, and Jim Moylan. I will start off the discussion with my opening statement on the bill. Bill Number 134-36 COR is our next step in our continued push in supporting the local agricultural industry. This bill amends Guam's local right-to-farm law by ensuring that all farmers are protected from being pushed out of are protected from being pushed out of their land by developers regardless of their farm size. This move comes from an effort to support local farmers regardless of the size of their property to ensure that all farmers have a right to farm. This bill also corrects this law to align with the newly passed bona fide farmer law, which allows for all farmers regardless of the size of their farm to be considered bona fide farmers. This bill also addresses the evolution of agricultural technology over the years. Today, a farmer could be growing a rather large yield on a small amount of land due to technologies, different things like hydroponics. And this bill seeks to protect those farmers as well.
Pick up some please so that I can eat it.
Including, uh, uh, Vice Speaker, please, uh, mute. Thank you. Uh, today, uh, this bill also seeks to protect those farmers as well, including them in the right to farm law. The bill also allows for the inclusion of aquaculture producers. And so with that, uh, allow me again to recognize, uh, my colleagues, uh, who are joining me, uh, this morning. Vice Chair and Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, Senators Jim Moylan, Tony Ada, Chris Duennius, uh, and Joanne Brown. And, uh, with that, we'll begin now with testimony, uh, from Director Chelsea Munya Brecht of the Department of Agriculture.
Thank you, Senator Rigel. Thank you for, uh, providing us with the opportunity to provide testimony on bill number one thirty-four dash thirty-six. Recognizing the vital role agriculture plays in our lives, this bill helps our community move that much closer to supporting this vital role. Sustainability, restorative agriculture, food security, agroforestry, permaculture. These are the nomenclature of our era and the concepts we are using to usher in Guam's agricultural renaissance. All of this is made possible by efforts such as this. This bill helps our agency provide support to small farms, backyard farms, urban farms, and homesteads, and all the systems that will that will evolve in between and around. We see every day the ingenuity that springs up in our agricultural community from the farmer who invents the invincible pig crap using a tilada to the farmer who uses discarded coconut husks as mulch so that he does not require one drop of water from G W A to grow his multitude of fruit trees. Both of these farms are on less than half an acre property and are deserving of recognition, protection, support, and access to opportunity. The Department of Agriculture fully supports bill one thirty-four dash thirty-six. This bill will be an ideal accompaniment to coming legislation to provide exemptions for urban agriculture. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Chelsa. Okay, I see a, um, uh, Mr. Pete Turlane who's, uh, logged on right now. Are you here to testify? I'm sorry?
Turlohi.
Okay, it's spelled Turlane on the thing, so I'm just going off what's spelled on your, uh. So, Mr. Turlohi, are you there?
Yes, Senator.
Hi, are you here to testify? Yes.
Okay, uh, I mean, just here in support of, uh, our directors, uh, and our agency's initiative to, uh, to go ahead and, uh, and include that, uh, and to encourage and to sustain, uh, the island with, uh, agricultural produce and to grow it as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, um. And I guess the only other person I see here that appears to be here to testify today is Mr., uh, Ron Leguany. Mr. Leguany, if you are here to testify, could you turn on your, um, camera, please, and unmute the microphone? Hafaday, Mr. Leguany.
Hafaday, todos samzo. Gire ni espíritu ni manai nata. Gire ni finota. Za u kontinua. Ile na lotnia. Iman ta ota. Pei fan ti stigu por esti. Na. Tadung estina sinenti paragow. Ile na la iman ota ota nu. Put i man lansu zan iman gualu. I say that in the gualu, that gualu is large, okay? Donkulu. Pesedzige no u sa ilansu, because that's in general. But the word for small gardens is haddin. Uh, donkulu na sidus maasi no na ezu nesina opetu de da, uh, Mr. Senator, uh, uh, Rigel. Um, uli na. Me oligbe dongo. You have been pushing in for so many, uh, good things coming up, and I'm wondering where you're getting all those good ideas. So it's hitting both areas, all areas on which I am involved with. Lo, uh, papisangan na, uh, loke, prima. Manaba, Senatora, uh, uh, Tina. Dan todi i man senado, yeah, Senator Duennius, Senator Moylan, Senator Ada, and Senator Joanne Brown. Dan todi man elu le, man elu ginimna mangai ki. Who, uh, who supot ti esti ni, ni, uh, ni, uh, interi menti. Um, esti, uh, la ipri niponi ulu tres quatro. Trenta size. Um, megge magai disti esti per esti. Na bulam man gogalu gi tatingi man ya. Zan bulam man lalansu paugusa. Uh, enegi haga stacotso gi zan e man makan doli roli gi. Gi teshi na man ono ne, edza pauguma pepeka, just to speak of tamano petafan. Nyoga gi gi man zatafan la. Zan gine na no, uh, megge man gogalu paugu zapet man nezi gasha haddin ya negi tatingi ban ya. Pesha husen supot ti esti, pesha. Za wa loke na, in, in, uh, supot ti esti. Sa, tagana geza ba, lumalansu gi tateni gi ma. Pesha edza wanna be faesina, uh, this would be applicable to public lands and, and to small gardens, right? That's, that's a question, you know, that. I sure hope that this is applicable to, um, to encourage more farmers, uh, small time far gardeners. Because in such small, in such a small area, you can grow maybe five or ten calamansi trees, but that one calamansi tree can produce fifty pounds of calamansi uh, in, in so many days, so many days, and that's a marketable item right now. Um, calamansi can go up to anywhere between, uh, one eighty a pound to two fifty a pound to four dollars a pound. To even four in a bag during, uh, offseason. Pesha edza papisangan tebebe, and Senator Nelson, Selena, Saludo Paragou. Then, uh, Senor John Borha, loke, Senor John, donkulu na gudisamentu, brother John, uh, goku supot tiu, and, uh, the, the director also, Chelsa Munya, sidus maasi, and now, sir. We are in the same boat, di man lalansit, and now we just need to sustain ourselves. And, uh, I'm in full support. Donkulu na gudisamentu, uh, Senator Rigel, for being the sponsor and all the co-sponsors. Uh, sidus maasi, edza.
Thank you, Mr. Leguany, for your testimony, and, uh, yes, I must, uh, give credit where credit is due. The idea for this bill actually came from the Department of Agriculture themselves, so thank you to, uh, Director Chelsa, John Borha, and everyone at the Department of Agriculture. This is actually, uh, their idea.
Okay, very good, sidus maasi.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, um. With that, is there anyone else here that would like to testify on behalf of the bill? Mr. Borha, did you have anything to add, Mr. John Borha?
Yes, Senator, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for having allowed me to, uh, do my testimony this morning in favor of the bill. And it's about due time. Uh, we would like to go to the industry, and any effort and any kind of support to the industry is very vital. Uh, however, this bill also preserves the space that farmers seek to grow things in, uh, conserve the soil as well as the soil needs or types of, uh, activities that we do on certain areas. Uh, it does encourage us, uh, it does encourage the local farmers, even the smallest of all, the subsistence farmers, to actually go out there now and have the space and put out that needs for the, their needs for their kitchens or whatnot, or even for the markets. So it's a very good bill, and I'm very supportive of it, and also my fellow constituents who I've worked with in the past have also voiced their opinions about having to safeguard the farming industry, the soils, the lands, rather than growing trees. They're seeing now that they're growing buildings rather than plants and whatnot. So this is a very vital bill and is very productive in the future. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Borha. Okay, uh, we do have a written testimony that was submitted by Guahan Sustainable Culture. Um, I would like to go ahead and read that into the record. So this is, uh, testimony on bill number one thirty-four dash thirty-six C O R. It says, "Hafaday, Chairman and Committee Members, thank you for the opportunity to make comments in favor of bill one thirty-four dash thirty-six. As a small farmer, I appreciate the thoughtful approach of this legislation. The underlying law, whether enforced or not over the years, was passed to purposefully protect bona fide farmers and their agricultural operations. Bill number one thirty-four dash thirty-six, however, reflects that the success of a farmer is not relevant to the amount of land that he or she farms, technology, techniques, and even the type of crop, plant, or harvest has changed the farming game. Since our inception and true to our mission, Guahan Sustainable Culture has promoted, advocated, and generated interest for people to start farming. People can farm for themselves, and more and more they are taking on farming for a number of reasons. For some, it gives comfort knowing what goes into their food. For others, a harvest is an added benefit to the hard work and exercise they exert to grow their own food. And more and more people are discovering that farming not only can save on their monthly grocery budget, but can also supplement their monthly income if they choose to sell their harvest. In short, this legislation updates our laws, taking into consideration that one doesn't need a half acre to warrant being a farmer or to have a successful farming operation. As a small bona fide farmer myself, operating on less than a half acre, I am very grateful for this legislation and its intent to recognize and accommodate the small farmer and our operations. Thank you again for the opportunity to provide comments, and donkulu na sidus maasi for all that you do to advocate for the farming community and promote sustainability. Signed by sidus maasi from Michelle Crisostomo, co-founder and president of Guahan Sustainable Culture." Okay, with that, that is all the, um, testimony we have today, unless there's anyone else here who I've missed who signed up today to provide testimony on this measure. If so, please, uh, raise your hand. If not, I'll allow the opportunity now for, um, my colleagues to ask any questions or make any comments, uh, that they may have. Uh, I see someone on John Borha's side come on. Was that, was there, did you have anything else to add to it?
No, Senator, thank you.
Okay. Uh, so with that, Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes.
Sidus maasi, uh, value, Mr. Chair, for giving me an opportunity to comment on this, uh, very impactful bill, one thirty-four dash thirty-six C O R. For me, the, this bill's intended purpose was to remove the acreage requirement of over, uh, one-half acre in size for, uh, protection of farms, and who would think that nine words would be really, uh, powerful and impactful to all our farmers? As the good, uh, farmer, uh, Senor, uh, Ron Leguany talked about passionately about the support of the farmers, one of the questions I did ask was would this also include the small farmers or the back, those who own little, uh, farming areas right behind their houses? And, uh, with that intent being, uh, supported, I think that this bill will go a long, long way, especially, Mr. Chair, with the recent, um, uh, legislation that has been passed that, you know, we make sure that we will afford all the farmers on Guam, and hopefully with, with, uh, revisiting, updating, modernizing, and literally giving the opportunity for farmers to farm right here on Guam. I'm going to know that this is going to be very good for our island. So, um, as co-sponsor of this bill, I think that, um, just reading the fiscal impact also, it says that, uh, this bill is administrative in nature and poses no fiscal impact uh, upon any funds of the government of Guam. I totally believe, Mr. Chair, that, uh, given that opportunity and knowing that we can get certified farmers or recorded farmers, uh, and update the registry and see more farmers come on, I think the opportunity to get, uh, more, um, federal resources and more grant opportunities, uh, outside, you know, numbers are very important, compiled data is very important to get grant resources, and I think this is one way of making sure that we have the viable, sustainable, uh, recording of all our farmers and and giving this as a part of that, it just makes it even better for them. So, thank you, and no other questions. Uh, um, maybe just a pontification from the director, eh, you know, making sure that every single farmer will be affected if this is released, so that even the smallest of farmers can, 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 can take advantage of this legislation.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Uh, Senator Moylan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you for the testimonies as well. Yes, I, I am in support of this. I'm very, I can see where it would be very helpful uh, for these farmers to also, uh, benefit as well. So, thank you for the bill and, and the testimonies provided. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Senator Ada?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no questions. I just, uh, look forward to this bill also moving on to our session agenda, if not this session, hopefully in the next session. Uh, it's an excellent bill that, uh, I believe that a lot of the, the farmers out there who do have smaller pieces of property would be able to now provide, uh, uh, food for their families, or even if they have enough to go out there and, uh, provide for the community. But, uh, I look forward to it, uh, hitting the floor, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Tidigwe.
Sidus maasi, uh, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity. Uh, thank you, Mr. Leguany, for being here. As always, advocating for the farmers, greatly appreciate it. And, um, of course, again, to Chelsea and, and the Department of Agriculture and all they're doing to ensure the, you know, the protection and safety of our farmers as well, you know, uh, allowing them the ability to do a, a, a great job when it comes to a job that most people are not, are not doing anymore, and that's farming. And what we can do to, you know, encourage the next generation to continue to farm. Um, I know that you're doing all you can, and I greatly appreciate that, the advocacy you have toward that. Um, the area, um, on, on G C A, I think this would, would go, go to you, Chelsea, if, if you, um, want to answer this question. Uh, twenty-one G C A six zero three five four reads, "No person who is engaged in agriculture use to farm land may be forced or required to stop such farming activities because of changes in the usage of surrounding lands, uh, nor because of zone changes." Okay, does the language referenced, uh, referenced above allow for a large-scale farming operation to exist adjacent or near single-family homes? For example, um, and if so, uh, are they, there any issues we should be aware of, particularly with, uh, unregulated or poorly regulated farms?
Um, yes, Senator, it does. Um, you can be farming and have your neighbors rezone to M one, um, or commercial use, and still your farm would be protected. But there are considerations that need to be made absolutely for how the farming practices are engaged, which is why it was so vital and important, um, that this body passed the legislation, thankfully, um, requiring bona fide certifications for all of those engaged in commercial purposes. That at least helps us with monitoring the commercial agriculture. Um, but the bona fide certification, uh, after consideration and discussion among all of the team, we also, um, added on a subsection for, uh, subsistence farming and qualified language for, um, A P Rists and all those who engage in the variety of farming practices. But that's the role of this agency and others like E P A is to make sure that we're monitoring and regulating how our produce are grown locally, whether it's for commercial or subsistence use. Um, so E P A would have much larger of a role in, um, any of the pesticides and fertilizers you'd used and ensuring that those who are using them do so with the knowledge of, um, proper usage.
Okay.
But this is not impact, yeah, someone using it directly. Um, but the farmer would still be allowed to farm.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for that answer, uh, Chelsa. And again, I appreciate all the hard work you're doing at Agriculture, as well as your staff. Please, uh, give them kudos on behalf of, of us. Thank you.
They're awesome. Thank you, Senator.
They are. Behind every strong woman, you know, there's always a great staff, and it's obvious that you have one. So I greatly appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tidigwe. Senator Duennius.
Sidus maasi, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, once again, I, I joined the public hearing to listen to the merits of this bill, and the testimony's been, uh, excellent on it. I want to thank the director, of course, once again, Chelsea Munya Branch, and of course, my classmate, uh, Pete Turlohi. JFK eighty-five, Go Islanders. And to, uh, John Borha as well. Thank you, uh, for, for your testimony. Dan hago loke i Senor Ron Leguany, man gugu pauguna, we akunuka, the magaid moof importante zomuno uh, testimonio paragow, da uskuputi loke esti na lai, da, uh, nu zaoleita, teno, uh, ognu to, uh, that, uh, nu, so that i zomuno testimonio paresti, uh, agnu to, da, so da i domono testimoni para esti. Sigamona, Sidus masi. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Duennius. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any comments. I think the, appreciate everyone for their testimony and participation. I think it's fairly straightforward, and certainly what we can do to encourage farming in our community is a very good thing. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to everyone that's participated in the hearing today.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank the Department of Agriculture under the esteemed leadership of Chelsea for the great work that they've been doing for our farmers and all the work that you've been doing at Department of Agriculture. I see the agency really moving forward, and so thank you for that under your leadership, Chelsea. I also like to thank everyone that came out today to give testimony. Mr. Leguany, hello, hafadei. But no, I think this is a very good bill. This is a, it's a complimentary bill, especially since last, last session, we passed a bill requiring all farmers looking to sell produce to register as bona fide farmers. And so this is a very prudent bill, and, and thank you for introducing it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Nelson. Okay, um, I don't think anyone else has signed up to testify. If anyone else is here and they want to testify or add anything, please raise your hand at this time. All right, I don't see anyone raising their hand, so I believe we've exhausted everyone on the list for testimony. I see Ursula Herrera popping up. Did you want, your video just popped on. Did you have something you'd like to say? Okay, please, go ahead. You're okay? Okay, thank you. Just checking, because I saw your video turn on. All right, so that'll do it for this bill, and I'd just like to add again that I, wait, sorry.
Sorry, Senator, if I can add one thing.
Yeah.
I do want to say that I do really have an awesome team here, especially with ADS, and I want to point out that there's going to be so many more awesome things coming out of this section, and, so, Senators, stay tuned, because we'll be counting on all of you for more public hearings and to support a lot of the efforts and programs that are going to be coming out of this section.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chelsea. Okay, I see Ursula is here to testify, so, sorry, I couldn't quite understand what you were saying, Ursula, but if you could, is your microphone, I can't hear anything right now coming from me. It might be if you've got, um...
One moment, Senator. Ursula's coming to my desk to testify.
Okay.
Miss Spencer, my speaker's not working. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. Hafadei todis, Sidus masi for having us. I just wanted to share that I am in support of this bill as introduced by our director, and in support of our agency, and Sidus masi, Senator, again. This is going to grow and sustain our agriculture industry, and I think especially for our men uncle, maybe they like to grow some medicinal plants, maybe thrive, bloom, so to speak, our almond industry, and start traditional plant, medicinal plants practice again and reviving it and keep it going strong. So in that note, I am in support of this bill, and thank you so much. Sidus masi.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much, everyone. Again, this bill is pretty straightforward. It's really simple. All it does is, there's a current law on the books that allows for farm protection, but that law required that it only applied to farms that encompassed over one-half acre in size. And it said, of course, no person who's engaged in agricultural use of farmland may be forced or required to stop such farming activities because of changes in the usages of surrounding lands nor because of zoning changes. So all this bill does is cross out that requirement that your lot be over one-half acre in size. And so I think that will make sure it catches any small farmers, and the testimony we got today from everyone, I really appreciate it, because there is a big difference now where more and more people are seeing how they can actually farm small gardens in their backyards, quarter-acre size, sometimes even smaller than that. You'll be surprised how much people can produce on a really small piece of land. So I thank everyone for their support and their testimony today on this bill, and I think this bill will do good to also protect the rights of those people farming on a really small lot of land. I mean, imagine if you just had a small piece of land, and then all of a sudden, all around you, a bunch of businesses open up, and then they try to make you shut down your farm because they don't want to farm next door to them or whatever it is, some sort of development is around you, and you've just got a small quarter-acre lot. This bill, if it passed into law, would protect you so people couldn't force you from stopping your farming practices. So this will conclude our discussion on Bill number 134-36. We will recess until 1 o'clock to proceed with the next part of the public hearing. Thank you, everyone, for your participation today, and we'll see you at 1 P.M. Thank you. Thank you.